Please rise. The October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three meeting of Halliburton County Council is now in session. Warden Miss Danielson presiding.
Morning, everyone. Please be seated. We respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located on Treaty Twenty Michisogig territory. And in the traditional territory of the Michisogig and Chipewa nations collectively known as the Williams Treaty's First Nations, which are Curve Lake, Rama, Hiawatha, Alderville, Skugog Island, Bosale, and Georgina Islands First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Could I have a mover in a second or two to adopt the agenda this morning? Councillors Dayu and Councillor Carter.
Moved by Councillor Dayu, seconded by Councillor Carter. Be it resolved that the October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three Halliburton County Council agenda be approved.
All in favor? That's carried. And is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof today? Seeing none? Could I have a mover in a second or two to adopt the minutes of the special meeting on October the fourth? And the October the eleventh regular meeting, Councillors Fury and Burton?
Moved by Councillor Fury, seconded by Councillor Burton. Be it resolved that the minutes from the October fourth, two thousand twenty three special meeting in the October eleventh, two thousand twenty three regular meeting of Halliburton County Council be adopted as circulated.
All in favor? That's carried. We have no business arising from the previous meeting. So we'll move into delegations and this morning we have Philip Primavera to speak about the deer feeding by law. In Daisert. Oh. So there's some. Oh, there's my agenda disappeared. It's one moment. You've seen the document that Mr. Primavera sent. Which is not very fulsome. I think that he intended probably to address some of these comments. Does anyone have any comment or thoughts that they'd like to make?
The bylaws yesterday, which maybe reason he's not coming because a lot of it's.
It's done.
Done. Didn't make everybody happy either, by the way.
No, I know that there's been a bit of of some rumbling about it, but. So it's it's in effect. Any other comments or questions about that? So do we have a resolution to receive?
So I amended the delegation or the the resolution to say be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the delegating materials from Philip.
Could I have a mover in a second here for that then? Councillors Dayu and Shell. All in favor? Let's carry it. Well, next we have a kind of an exciting thing to do, and that's to award long service awards to three people. To Carl Northey, Carla Hill, and Kevin Robillard. All for long service. So if you're in the audience and you'd like to come forward, I see at least two, maybe three of you are here. If you'd like to come up here.
But Carl Northley began his career with Halliburton County Paramedic Service twenty years ago. In those years, he provided many hours of dedicated frontline service as well as orientation for new hires. Also, the winning original community paramedics program was initiated in two thousand seventeen. And has since participated in the very successful expanded community paramedic program. Thank you for your years of patient care and your dedication to community paramedics. Congratulations and thanks so much for your. Next is part of Bill. Part of joining the Halliburton County Paramedic Service fifteen years ago and has been a tremendous asset to our team. Along with providing exceptional patient care, Carl has passed on their knowledge by precepting paramedic students. Carl's dedication does not end with patient care. She also provides countless and volunteer hours in several capabilities, including the organizing and designing votes for our Santa Claus parades. Thank you for your years of dedicated service and care that you provided to the patients and number of patients. Congratulations. And last but not least, this Kevin Robillard. Patrol Superintendent in the Public Works Department. Seven fifteen years as a county employee has taken into many different roles over the years. His knowledge of the public works department and health and safety are invaluable and greatly appreciated. Thank you so much, Kevin, for your years of service and dedication that Harvard County.
Wonder if we can get a picture of the boss. So we'll move into corporate services. With our our finance reports. Good morning.
Good morning.
So we'll start with the payroll register.
We had two pay periods in September with net direct deposits totaling five hundred and fifty six thousand, three hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty eight cents.
Any questions on the payroll register? Hearing none, could I have a mover in a second or to receive that? Councillors Carter and McCackney?
Moved by Councillor Carter, seconded by Councillor McCackney. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on the payroll register for September two thousand twenty three and further that the payroll register for September two thousand twenty three with net direct deposits totaling five hundred and fifty six thousand, three hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty eight cents be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Next is your check register.
Our September check register totaled two million, eighty one thousand, eighty two dollars and sixty two cents.
Any questions on the check register? A hearing none, could I have a mover in a second or to receive it? Councillors Dayu and Fury.
Moved by Councillor Dayu, seconded by Councillor Fury. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on the check register for September two thousand twenty three. And further that the check register for September two thousand twenty three with checks, EFTs, and PAPs totaling two million, eighty one thousand, eighty two dollars and sixty two cents be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Next are your year-to-date actuals as of September the thirtieth.
Overall, as at September thirtieth, seventy point two percent of operating expenses have been incurred and sixty eight point one eight percent of capital. I have included in my report the details of any specific areas that are currently identifying over seventy five percent spent, which is approximately where we should be as of the end of September.
Any questions? Here to be in good shape. Could I have a mover in a second or to receive the year-to-date actuals? Councillors Royale and Burton.
Moved by Councillor Ryle, seconded by Councillor Burton. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on the year-to-date actuals as at September thirtieth, two thousand twenty three, and further that the year-to-date actuals as at September thirtieth, two thousand twenty three be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, as your reserve and reserve fund policy, really happy to see this policy developed. So if you'd like to speak to that.
Sure. The county currently does not have a a reserve policy, so I am bringing this policy forward for councils. Recommending recommending this policy to council, sorry. Within the report, I'm recommending that council review and accept the four-page policy as the set policy and that the attached Schedule A be a working document for council to adjust and update as projects and or plans for the future are identified. The draft policy provides guidance for staff and council in establishing reserves. Establishing reserves contributions to or draws from lending or borrowing of reserves, investment of funds, closure of reserves, and the reporting requirements. Schedule A provides the detail of each county reserve, including potential reserve targets and the basis for them. A number of the targets are set as TBD or to be determined as these are areas that have recently had assessments or studies done. And it's anticipated a plan for future needs or development will be coming before council, which will assist you in determining the appropriate targets for those reserves. Other targets such as the Integrity Commissioner, the Pay Equity or Insurance Reserves have been suggested based on current reserve balances and knowing our future future potential costs. I have included industry norm targets for the Working Fund Reserve, Winter Maintenance, Roads and Bridges Reserves, as I thought it was important for council to be aware of those what those targets typically are for those reserves in comparison to our current balances. As council can see, we are a long way from some of these targets, and this will be a long-term plan in trying to achieve those. So staff are looking for direction on appropriate target numbers for these reserves. And I'm not sure if that's a discussion that you want to have today, or also suggest if council feels appropriate, staff could meet with the Finance Chair and Deputy to discuss and bring it back to council as a whole.
That might be a good direction, and I was thinking maybe more towards, you know, when we get into budgeting discussions that we would have a clear idea about some of the targets, but I'd look for comments or questions from council. Thoughts, Councillor Carter?
Yeah, I would agree that you should get together as a small group and and come up with this. I mean, I think this is a a very conservative approach and but it's a good it's a good starting point. And, you know, we 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 go from there. I mean, we don't want to be contributing so much to reserves that we end up having to increase everybody's taxes too much. And like you say, it's got to be something that's done over a long term, but, you know, this is an excellent starting point.
Any other thoughts? Excellent piece of work. Like, there's a lot of work that's gone into this and it's appreciated. So hearing no further questions or comments, could I have a mover in a second or to receive and approve the policy? Councillor McCackney and Councillor Shell.
Moved by Councillor McCackney, seconded by Councillor Shell. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on the reserve and reserve fund policy. And further that the reserve and reserve fund policy be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks so much. I don't believe we have anything under procurement or human resources. So next up is our IT status report. Morning, Mr. March.
Morning, Warren Danielson, Members of Council. For you today is my standard monthly IT SAS report, given council an update on where we are with various IT projects. I don't think I have anything to to bring to your attention other than the records management project, close on the RFP. I hope to have a report to council in the November session to give you more information of of where we landed on that. But other than that, I don't have anything to bring to your attention, but always happy to take questions.
Any questions? Councillor Carter.
It's just a general question. I've seemed to be getting more and more outrageous spam. Is it is this just not unabated at this point? Or is it just getting crazier and crazier at that?
Can I ask a question? Is it landing in your junk box or in your?
No, no, it's going through. You're capturing it, but then it but then it's, you know, coming to me to verify whether it's spam or not. And it's, yeah, I'm just wondering if if this continues to be. You know, I know that something like more than eighty percent of all mails is 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 not legitimate. Is it? Is that going up? Is that abating? Is it? Is our software able to keep up as much as possible?
So we use through the chair. We use Microsoft spam. So we're in the Microsoft three sixty five ecosystem. So we use Microsoft spam filtering, which that's not the best. It's up there. You know, if 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 it's captured and put in your junk mail, then it's doing its job. Typically, what it does is it scores spam based on metrics. And if it's really high, you never see it. If it's kind of high, it goes in quarantine. If it's iffy, it'll land in your junk box. So what we've seen in the past is is definitely with with the amount of spam kind of go up and down. It'll go up and then what will happen? They'll shut down some bot farm somewhere, then it goes down. Then it starts up somewhere else and then goes down. I imagine we're if you're seeing a lot, we're probably in the peak. If you want, we can always look at your individual spam settings and tweak it a bit. But other than that, it's doing its job if it's not landing in your inbox.
Just trying to get a general view of things because it's a I know it's a relentless pursuit, but it's a
It is.
It's just seems strange for a while.
Councillor Royal.
Yeah, Mike, it's it's just got nothing to do with the email, but it does have to do with municipal phones, and I'm getting a lot more texts telling me that my Amazon non-existent account is being defrauded. I am deleting it and then reporting it as indicated to both Bell and Apple. Is that the protocol we should be using? And is that the only one that that we need to worry about?
It is. If it gets to a point, if I may, if it gets to a point where it's becoming very, very disruptive, let us know. I'm not. We can talk to Bell. Unfortunately, I'm not sure. There's not a ton to do because if it comes from a particular phone number, it's just one particular phone number all the time, then we can block it. But much like spam email, they it's it's trivial to make new emails. It's trivial to make new phone numbers. They'll go. They'll just kind of rotate them through. I think what you're doing is is the best bet, but like I said, if it gets to a point where it's becoming disruptive, then come talk to me and we can kind of look further into into what options we have. But I'm glad you're not clicking on anything or or actioning any of the stuff that's being sent to you. So it's great.
Thank you. Made me so cautious that I'm actually deleting the odd email that I shouldn't. It'll come back to me if it's important enough. Any other questions on the IT report? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive it? Councillors Fury and Royale.
Moved by Councillor Fury, seconded by Councillor Ryle. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three IT status report.
All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is economic development and the third quarter and tourism report.
Thank you, Warden. Just a couple of items of note in the report. It's really great to see. We've made some investment in our staff, just doing some search engine optimization training. Eric Casper, and that's really paying off. If you see their numbers increase year over year and website visitation and click-throughs. And then, secondly, we did host our first Small Business Week. Last year was a coordinated effort with HCDC, the Chamber of Commerce and the Arts Council of Halliburton Islands. And just a quick thank you to them. It's the first time that we've done that. It was an item that we that was identified. Interactive strategy was really well received and something that we'll be looking at doing year over every year. Just highlighting our partnership with HDC at the link, if you've seen that in the news in the last month. And just a point of clarification there. It's it's we're not moving there permanently. We just have a an office space that we can utilize in their location if staff are either meet meeting clients or businesses. We can also utilize that, and our goal really primarily is actually use that utilize it as a space a space to bring some of the economic development support agencies that are located in the Peterborough area that that service our businesses that they can be there and maybe have a presence on a more continued basis. As well, the Business Bank and the BDC is there as well. So they'll have a temporary space. So it dovetails well with the concierge service that we're trying to create. So you'll be seeing that probably in the next month, the media, working with HDC, BDC, the Chamber of Commerce and in the county. Each organization brings a different skill set of what they're good at, and we're just trying to make it easier for businesses and prospective developers if they're looking at investing in the county that they can start with us, and then we can filter them out and make it as seamless as possible. And with that, happy to field any questions.
Very fulsome report. Thank you for that. Questions or comments? For Mr. Robell. Hearing none, could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the report? Councillors McCackney and Shell.
Moved by Councillor McCackney, seconded by Councillor Shell. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives the October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three report on the third quarter economic development and tourism activity update.
All in favor? That's carried. And up next is the High Caliburton summary. I'm assuming you're going to do that.
Yes, Warden. Just a quick update. We do this after our winter event and fall event, just to give you a summary of of how the event went. Of particular note for us is just the continued growth that we're seeing from participation from the GTA. Ultimately, that's the goal. When we host these events is to bring people from a greater distance, and they're staying over and spending more time in the community and therefore spending, hopefully spending more money. And then just a summary, as we noted in the spring, we're going to take a bit of a different approach next year in the winter. Obviously, continue to run our hikes, but then utilize some of the anchor events that are taking place throughout February and try to promote those and work with those partners to create a more fulsome program over the month of February and and help our operators.
It's good. It's great to see the increased participation coming from outside the county. Questions or comments on the High Caliburton report? Any none? Could I have a mover in a second or to receive it? Councillor Dayu, Councillor Fury.
Moved by Councillor Dayu, seconded by Councillor Fury. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received the October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three High Caliburton Summary Fall two thousand twenty three report.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, sir. Next up, physician recruitment. Good morning.
Good morning, Warden and members of council. It's my pleasure to give you an update after a few months. We have the two rental properties for physician recruitment underway. The one on Anson Street in Minden, we have that lease signed until June of next year. We've had two different physicians staying there, providing relief to the medical center and specifically to the Minden Clinic. And it's it's going over very well. There are added costs for this particular property for snow plowing and house cleaning. And these items have been added to the operational budget for council's consideration. Our property on Deer Point Lane in Halliburton, we've re-leased that as well, and that's now for a full twelve months. So that is is good until next August. We there there were some issues. There was some plumbing repairs, some major plumbing repairs that the property owner had to undergo, and this all happened before our lease started. So we had to pause the lease for the month of October at no charge to us, just while the repairs were underway. It didn't affect any physicians staying there because there actually weren't any booked for that month. So that's all good. We've had reservations for five physicians staying there this fall, so six and a half weeks and already taking reservations for two thousand twenty four. So we've had some doctors that are coming back because it's they've enjoyed the stay. They've enjoyed the experience of being in town. And just this week I was speaking with the the physician staying in Minden, and she said, you know, you you guys make this easy. You make us want to come here. So I really think that these properties make a big difference. I attended a recruitment event for McMaster Medical Residence in September. There were forty family medicine residents attending, and there were thirty eight communities there with exhibits. So you can see it's highly competitive environment. I had conversations with ten different residents. Most of them just want to come here and locum after they're done residency. There was one in particular that is saying she's interested in full-time practice. But we're definitely seeing that most residents, this is what they want to do. They want to locum and just try out different communities when they're first done. And also worth noting, I think, is our marketing efforts. I had so many other recruiters from different communities come by and say what a great job we're doing, people taking photos of our poster, which is the same as the billboards commenting on how effective it is and a number of residents noted that they saw it when they were up here on vacation and thought it was great. So it's just good to get that feedback and that that we're standing out. Some upcoming events that I have is University of Ottawa Residence Retreat, which is this week, and there's a hundred and twenty residents expected to attend, and Veronica Nelson, the CEO at the hospital, is attending with me. And there's another one, which is for rural residents in Collingwood in January, and another one at Western University in February. And all of the costs for these events have been included in my two thousand twenty four budget. Some trends that I've noticed with residence events is that the costs have really gone up, the registration, and then also just the cost for travel. And as I mentioned, the physicians themselves seem more interested in locum opportunities rather than settling anywhere full-time, unfortunately. So you're coming up to today's date this year, so far I've had three physicians that have come for community assessments. And as far as locum physicians, I've helped to recruit fifteen of of them. So they've been covering inpatients at the hospital, emergency room, and the family practice. And some of these locums, they come for one week. Some have come for up to three weeks. So there's been a lot of coverage and relief that's happened through my recruitment. I've also been assisting Triple HS with recruiting a medical director for Highland Wood. There there's now we've had one of our physicians retire, and one of her duties was was covering Highland Wood, so that's no a deficit there. So there has been many applicants, but none so far have qualified. There we're getting a lot of applicants that are foreign-trained, and they're just they're not qualified. Something exciting that's come up is that Queens University now has a teaching site at Lake Ridge Hospital in Oshawa. So they've just launched their first cohort of twenty medical students this fall. And there's a potential of Halliburton County being exposed to more learners through this program. So we've developed a relationship with Lake Ridge, with the dean there, with the CEO, et cetera, had have had meetings. And they're looking at in two years' time, which is not that far away, of having their medical students coming out for experience in the Halliburton area. So they were very positive about working together with us. They've offered their simulation center for continuing education and also discussed the the opportunity about having specialists, like specifically emergency room specialists that require supervision in order to be eligible to practice, that they would supervise them for us at their facility. So it's really been a nice door that's opened as far as that relationship. Something new that I've tried was a posting in the British Medical Journal. And this is specifically to market to physicians from the UK. And as you're aware, the CPSO has loosened up some of the requirements for physicians from Australia, the UK, the US, and Ireland. And Canada is, we've been told, is the second country of choice for immigration. So I've been trying to see what I can do there. So the ad that I ran was five weeks long. Was five weeks long. I had twenty two physicians contact me, express their interest and give me their their CV. Three are very strong leads, I would say. They're eligible for licensure. It just takes a long time with the process. It takes about seven weeks to go through the process. With the College of Physicians and Surgeons of Ontario to get confirmation that they are eligible. But as far as reviewing their CV, it looks like they they would be eligible to practice. So just sort of waiting, waiting with that. But these physicians would be eligible to practice as emergency room doctors and in our family medicine clinic. Along with having physicians come from other countries, there's another process which I'm learning about. The labor market impact assessment. Or as it's known, L M I A. This is necessary for any physician candidates who are not permanent residents or citizens of Canada. And it must be done to bring in any foreign workers, not just doctors, just anybody. This is run through the government of Canada. So I'm currently in discussions with the executive director of our clinic. As well as members of Health Ontario, sorry, Ontario Health, to learn more about this. And they've told me, you know, since the Ontario Health has loosened up their requirements for those four countries. That they're seeing more and more of these assessments go through. And there's, there's just more interest. With the international physicians. So the steps, it is quite a big process, but it is doable. The first step is to. That I have to show job postings that we are trying to recruit within Canada. So those job postings are underway. Secondly, the candidates have to travel here for a community assessment. And then make a commitment that yes, they want to come here and that we're a good fit for each other. After that, there's an application to be completed. And there is a cost associated with this. It's a thousand dollars per candidate. So this is new territory for us. It's new territory for a lot of recruiters. The details of the application are still being learned. So this, like, as as we move through this, I'll be able to explain more about this. But I can tell you that Ontario Health this month. Has launched a series of seven webinars to learn about this process. So you can see that this is a new trend that they're making a big effort to teach. About international recruitment, how to review CVs to just decide if they're eligible, et cetera. So this is something that I'm attending all these webinars and learning more every day. So the action plan, as noted in the July update to council, we've met and discussed an action plan for our department. And based on the initial discussions, the following areas have been determined as areas of focus. And that's increased attendance at recruitment events. And some of these are now being offered internationally. I haven't gone to any, but for, as an example, there is one. That Casper, who's a a national recruitment organization. They have one that just actually happened last week in Ireland. So we have a lot of Canadians going to medical school in Ireland. This event is called a repatriation event. So it's to go there. It was specific just for Canadian recruiters. To go there and show them what they could come back to. So these kind of opportunities have never been there before. This was the first one in Ireland. So it's something that we do need to consider going forward if this is where we have to start looking. Just identifying, creating a streamlined process and checklist when when dealing with international candidates, and I'm working on that. Enhancing our marketing efforts and engaging with medical students as well. So the financial impact, the department is tracking to budget allocation. And identified initiatives contained within this report will be included in the two thousand twenty four operational budget for consideration. And that's the end of my update.
Well, thank you so much. Obviously, you're doing a lot of good work on our behalf. It's, it's unfortunate, this new process, the L M I A. Has added a new challenge to your work. And it's unfortunate that they couldn't break. Given the shortage of medical professionals in the country, that they couldn't break that away from other, other roles. But I guess it is what it is.
Well, a lot of these processes are changing quickly. You know, when they, when they change the eligibility for those four countries this spring, that wasn't expected. So they are, as time goes on, things are becoming a little bit easier. So that that may change yet.
Any questions? Councilor Carter.
So not including emergency. Which is obviously a big deal here. Do you, what's your goal in terms of the number of physicians you think we need to recruit?
Well, for the family medical center, we are now five physicians short. We have eight on staff and we have openings for five. So my goal is is to at least get, you know, two or three in two thousand twenty four.
Yeah, I would guess that, you know, right now we're at about fifty percent of the people have local doctors. And we're growing, so we probably, the six to ten is probably not unreasonable for what we need.
So you're, but your work does also include the recruitment for emergency doctors?
Yes, it does. Yes.
Other questions or comments? Councilor Fury.
Who who appoints physicians and surgeons group? Well, I think they need to review it. If it takes three weeks to process an application, I. Hey, that's just my opinion, but seems we need these people so badly. Every time, three weeks, three weeks. How much paperwork? I don't know. If it's provincially appointed, they must be funding it too. So they should have some say in who's there.
For a province that needs help professionals so badly, they certainly put roadblocks in the way. Councilor Dayu.
Thanks. The the center of our population is certainly in the south. It's Minden, Halliburton and and Stanhope, et cetera. But say someone from the UK comes and they fall in love with the village of Dorset. Well, would we be able to support their transition to open up a private practice elsewhere outside of the the core population?
Well, that, that part, I mean, I I would, I would assume that coming here, they would be signing a return of service. And so it would be in in the details of that return of service of where they would practice.
Go ahead. Would you tell, just explain that a little bit better? I'm not sure I I know all the details of what you mean.
Well, physicians that come here to practice full time, sign a return of service agreement. Which is a minimum of four years of 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 practicing within the county. So it would be, you know, if if they were in Dorset. You know, that would be open to them, I suppose, but.
But wouldn't the case be if if someone was to practice in Dorset? As an example, that they would have to work through one of the existing family health teams?
I would think so. Like, this is uncharted territory, but I would think they would be signing an agreement with the local family health team. As well as a return of service with the county.
Councilor Carter, you have a comment on that?
Yeah, the way the government has set things up, somebody's opening up their own private practices. Pretty cost prohibitive right now. So you generally would join a a family, you know, health team of some sort. The one in Dorset is rented in Huntsville. So, you know, that would be where they would. They would more than likely align with. And I think right now it's only nurse practitioners at the Dorset Health. But that's, you pretty much need to sign up for the family health team, particularly when you're starting.
Or or to establish it, another family health team is extremely complicated.
Probably not necessary.
Any other questions? I could I then have a move in a second or to receive the physician recruitment reports? Counselors Fury and Carter.
Moved by Councilor Fury, seconded by Councilor Carter, be resolved that Halliburton County Council received the October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three report on physician recruitment update. September two thousand twenty three for information.
All in favor. That's carried. Thanks so much. Keep up the good work. Uh, next up is a. A supply issue on an ambulance, so we'll look to our paramedic chief.
Morning, Warden, members of council. Um, I'm just coming to a sort of a second report. At the end of September, I presented a report to. For pre-budget approval to purchase new ambulance with a power load system. I thought I had my calculations all down to the to the T, but it turned out I was eight hundred and eighty one dollars and seventy five cents shy on my. The calculations and discussions with the with the vendor when they came back with the final pricing. So I'm I'm just here requesting the revised purchase price of two hundred and sixty three thousand, seven hundred and seventy eight dollars and seventy five cents. Plus applicable taxes be pre-budget approved.
Comments or questions? Councilor Carter. Pardon me?
I was moving.
Oh, okay, moving right along. Seconded by Councilor Burton.
Really think you should give him a harder time? Just to teach him, get it right the first time. Moved by Councilor Carter, seconded by Councilor Burton, be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives report EMS dash ten dash two thousand twenty three. And approves the revised purchase price of two hundred and sixty three thousand, seven hundred and seventy eight dollars and seventy five cents. Plus applicable taxes for the supply of an ambulance from Crestline Industries.
All in favor. That's carried. Thank you. Okay, so under other administrative reports, we have first up a. Draft policy for county access permits. Good morning, Mr. Clutkey.
Good morning, Gordon Danielson and members of council. Today I'm presenting a report of a new access policy. It was a result of great collaboration efforts. Of the Rhodes Bridge Drainage Working Group as part of the Service Delivery Review. During the development of the the new access policy. Consistency of users and municipalities was identified as the. The the greatest benefit to having. This new revised entrance policy or access policy. The access policy will provide. Will prohibit, restrict and regulate access to county roads to the network. As well as the lower tier municipalities, once they're adopted to respective municipalities. The the changes for the county were mostly housekeeping and aligning with the municipalities. And there may be possibilities in the future of consolidated services as well. So it's great that we align to one document for all. To hopefully get to see benefits in the future as well.
So this same policy is going to be going to all work. Yeah, it's great.
And I believe Highlands East has already already adopted the the policy.
Well, kudos to the group. Any comments or questions on the policy? Comments from Mr. Redder?
I I did have a call from a concerned citizen who promised she would watch today and make sure that I passed her comments along. So I I'm going to do that. She was concerned with the provisions in. That the insurance provisions in in Article Five, where we require five million dollars per occurrence. For liability insurance and pollution from contractors. Her concern was that that would be cost prohibitive for small local contractors. And and it may shut them out of some business, which clearly isn't the intent. I spoke to C A O Hunter, who coordinated the. This, the, the, the Public Works Group, and she coordinated the development of this policy. That was a recommendation that was received from Highlands East insurer. We did agree, though, that if if county council or any of our other local municipalities wanted to reduce that number. It wouldn't be a critical issue. We could still have consistent policies across the county with different liability insurance requirements. Should you want that. But I I I promised I would bring that concern forward and and county council would would consider it.
Comments? Councilor Fury then Councilor Carter.
Should remember that after yesterday. Was off the all day. Just a question. I I know we got the policy there. What's the application form look like? Like sometimes, and who's making the call? As a layman, I'm filling out this application form. I don't have all that detail in front of me. So what happens? And is that going to fall on staff then?
Well, there's, there's two processes essentially to the. To the application. The first process is it, an individual can essentially call in or or. Provide an email to staff just with. The inquiry of an entrance. And then staff can look at it and assess and say the possibilities are there for an entrance. And then they are to fill out the application. Our application, actually. We are, will be using. A service. And it's the. Permit Central, which right now we have our annual. Overdimensional on it, and it seems to be working well. And basically, the. The application is is, it's pretty straightforward, very simple. And and the information is there that's required to be provided. And and if someone has any issues, they can definitely contact staff and we'll help them, help them through it.
Sometimes terms get used that laymen don't understand.
We 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 tried to make it as as easy as possible. With terminology and that's all.
Councilor Carter.
Yeah, we, I think we just had a similar thing in Minden with suppliers for that. You know, often we're, we're dealing with, you know, replacing culverts or something, we're dealing with, you know, big companies. But there are some instances where we're dealing with small companies and the five million becomes a bit prohibitive for them to get. So we lowered it to two, did we not? So we lowered it to two because we thought, you know, the the risk in 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 of an event. And what the type of work they were doing was not. You know, was not significant. And so, yes. So to try to give the local, small contractors an opportunity, we we did lower it to two.
I, this has been an item of discussion in Elgukon Islands as well as the five million dollars. Has been recommended by insurance companies as the industry standard. And, you know, so the the five million dollar requirement has been sort of included in almost every aspect. And it would seem that maybe some sliding scale depending on the size of the company. Or, you know, for things like, for instance, I understand it was an example in in another municipality. Where there was discussion about a face painter for an event. And and for them to have to require a five million dollar liability policy, craziness. You know, I mean, it just seems like things have gotten a little out of hand. So I think that that discussion will be ongoing on on our part. So, you know, there's some understanding for this lady's concerns. Any other thoughts or comments about the policy as it stands right now? Could I have a move in a second or then to adopt it? Councilor Carter?
Could we change it to two?
Do we possibly want to defer it? So there can be further discussion to see if there can be. A consensus reached amongst the parties that are have developed a policy? That maybe be best. A best, a better approach? I'm just concerned because as you said, there are some larger companies where or larger contracts where the the policy of five million dollars might apply. And others were were not. I'd look for thoughts from others, Councilor Rail.
Yeah, I'd like to see it deferred as well because if if the entire, I mean, if the, if the, all the municipalities in the county. Are going to look at a sliding number or reduce it to two million. But with the Highlands East in a pretty rough position, being the only one at five. that with the Highlands East in a pretty rough position being the only one at five million. So I would like to defer until we've had a chance to discuss it, and then at which point in time, if it does go lower, we can, we can look at it uh, from, from a Highlands East perspective as well.
Thoughts from other members of council, deferral? Okay, could I have a mover in a second or then to defer approval? Counselors Carter and Shell? Sorry, I just, you're describing, sorry, we'll give you a moment.
Moved by Councilor Carter, seconded by Councilor Shell, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received the October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three staff report, adoption of new county access policy PW dash zero-two, and further that Halliburton County Council defer consideration of the policy until the Public Works Working Group reviews the liability insurance requirements.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next up is a discussion about expansion of the food recycler program. Good morning, Ms. McKinnon.
Good morning, Warden Danielson and members of council. Uh, so this report is requesting budget pre-approval for eighty-three thousand dollars for continued food cycler programming in two thousand twenty-four. Uh, so there are two reasons for this request. First, staff are hoping to leverage the county's contribution for a funding application from Environment and Climate Change Canada for the Food Waste Prevention and Diversion Fund. Having a contribution from the county would build a stronger application, and if successful, the funding would be used to increase the number of units offered in the program and offer them at even lower costs to residents. Should the funding application not be successful, we have the opportunity to offer a similar program to that of this year. Uh, so with five hundred units at the same price to residents. Food Cycle Science requires program confirmation by the end of December in order to secure the same discounts, including the federal investments from the Food Waste Reduction Challenge. The full results of the two thousand twenty-three program will be presented to council in the coming months. However, early results indicate that the program was extremely successful. The five hundred units have been distributed um, pretty well in an even ratio in each municipality as number of dwellings. Of the four hundred and thirteen responses we've received so far, so far, ninety-four percent believe their friends and family would join a food cycler program at a similar cost. Seventy-three percent of residents would choose the food cycler over curbside collection of green bins or community drop-off sites. And ninety-nine point seven-four percent will continue to use the food cycler after the pilot program. Comments from residents have been overwhelmingly positive. So to read one quote from a resident, thank you so much for allowing us to participate in this pilot. It has totally changed the way we work in the kitchen. Our garbage bag is so much lighter and we have significantly decreased our household garbage. Truly amazing. I am sold and continue to tell everyone how amazing the machine is. The program and the collaboration between the county and the local municipalities is also seen as a success beyond our borders. Uh, so Algonquin Highlands was the fourth ever community to trial a food cycler program. Dizart staff presented at the Roma Conference on their program earlier this year alongside presentations from the Minister of the Environment, Conservation and Parks, as well as AMO staff. And county staff have received inquiries on the program from as far as the city of Brisbane and Australia. The five hundred households that participated this year are diverting one hundred and thirty-nine tons of food waste annually or one thousand one hundred and ten tons of food waste over eight years, which equates to one hundred and eighty-one tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per year or cumulatively one thousand four hundred and forty-three tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. Diverting organic waste from our landfill sites is one of the best actions we can take to reduce our municipal greenhouse gas emissions. Waste management costs in Dizart are about two hundred and eleven, two hundred and eleven dollars per ton. Uh, so assuming the cost of managing waste across all of our municipalities is between a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars per ton, then the five hundred units distributed in two thousand twenty-three will save between a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in waste management costs uh, for a total investment of eighty-three thousand dollars. A similar program in two thousand twenty-four would offer about the same return on investment or potentially even better should additional funding be secured. The program would continue to evolve, including the introduction of a new unit that would be used the smallest in physical size, but the bucket would be in between the two sizes of the smallest unit and the largest unit. And the program can move fully online, which units shipping directly to residents. Uh, but of course, staff can assist residents in person or over the phone if they would prefer that option. Uh, so I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thanks for this report, Corey. I, I, I know that in the past there have been some, you know, varying approaches or thoughts, you know, on county council about this. When I look at the survey results and the possible savings that uh, that we can see from this, I, you know, I just uh, I'd look at it pretty positively, but I've looked to other members of council for comments, thoughts about going forward.
Yeah, I, I remain amazed by the survey return. We had a similar survey return rate in Algonquin Highlands. Um, eighty percent plus of participants actually filling out a survey is remarkable in anyone's books. And obviously, the, you know, the, their answers are very positive towards the program. And for me, the bottom line, even beyond the environment, which everyone knows is my number one reason for being at this table. Um, uh, no, I'll qualify that. Obviously, the people are the number one reason, but, but, but it's a big passion of mine. Um, but really, the bottom line is the return on investment. You know, these are, these are extraordinary rates of a return on investment. The idea that we could put in eighty-three thousand dollars um, in, in a year and see a savings of a hundred and sixty-six five to two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in waste management costs is an exceptional return on investment. And, and that's where I land my um, my vote.
Other comments or questions or concerns, Councilor Shell?
I would agree with everything that Councilor Dayo has just said, and that's just basically on one, one landfill within, or what's, pardon me, one municipality within the county, right? Correct then? That was just based on only Dizart's numbers?
Even assuming a lower end, so that's assuming a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars per ton. Dizart's at two hundred and eleven per ton, but other municipalities might be a bit lower than that.
Thank you.
Could I have a mover in a second and then to approve moving forward of the program? Counselors Carter and Dayu?
Moved by Councilor Carter, seconded by Councilor Dayu, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received staff report PLN dash fifty-eight dash two thousand twenty-three entitled Food Cycler Pilot Program Expansion, that eighty-three thousand dollars be allocated to the two thousand twenty-four climate uh, change budget and be approved prior to the passage of the two thousand twenty-four budget for an expanded food cycle program.
Uh, did you have a question, Councilor McKecney?
I may, if I might have lied here, just tell me the uh, no. But um, I'm very passionate about uh, needless to say, quite a few things that uh, are a big part of all our uh, constituents' lives. And like, we spend a lot of time talking about food processors and that, which is great. And the report shows that they're, they're working, which is fine with me. But I, I honestly, and I know this is gonna sound right off the wall, but that's Walt McCackney. Um, why do we never, ever talk about incinerating garbage? We had a report yesterday about all our landfill sites in Dice Art. And right, Mayor Ferry, uh, we got a lot of concerns. And the amount of money that we're spending trucking to Peterborough, to Leamington or Chatham or Michigan. And then we have a lot of people who, I don't drink their Kool-Aid, but I'm very passionate about the environment and climate change and all these issues. How do you think those trucks are running down the, the highways? Like, I got friends of mine who live in those areas. I lived in London, Ontario. There's a lot of trucks going down there. I mean, to me, we're hypocrites. Why, why can't, I, here, I got a crazy vision. Right in the middle there, this is Halliburton County, right in the middle is a, is a incinerator, which we all feed and generate some energy and and these incinerators today, if you check the ones in Durham, which I check all the time, the scrubbers that are on there, I don't know a heck of a lot about it. I'm sure they're not educated enough to, but I know one thing. Our director of public works, I go into his office all the time, he tells me, there's the column right there. Well, that tells you what's going in the air. There's nothing bad going in the air. And all over the world they're doing. I, I just can't get my head around how we're just, like, to me, we're just kicking a can, and it's a bad can down the road. And our landfill sites are costing us a lot of money. And I think we're doing a lot of harm to the environment too, not just with the issues we have at the landfill sites, but what's going in the air. Thanks for your time.
I would say that you're definitely not out of order. It's, it's, it's also not necessarily related. I mean, this is another aspect of of dealing with things, but you, you know, I know that there have been discussions for a long time about the possibility of uh, of incineration. Um, I think, but you know, before I uh, decided that I was going to be a local politician, I was reporting at a, at a Dice Art at All meeting where there, there was talk about a partnership for an incinerator, but at that time, I, I believe it was deemed to be not affordable. Um, but it is something that, that possibly the, you know, the Waste Management Group um, should start considering and looking at the possibility of what's the feasibility? What would it cost us all if we were to partner on a, on an incinerator? Uh, Councilor Shell?
Just so I may comment to that too, and I completely agree with what Walt's saying. Um, the study that was done probably, I'm going to say between twelve and maybe even fifteen years ago. It was determined that Halliburton County itself did not generate enough garbage for us to have an incinerator. So what would happen is we'd actually have garbage being trucked into the county. Now, that's been, like I said, probably over a decade ago, so I'm sure there's, you know, new techniques and there's probably smaller incinerators. So it's definitely something that maybe we should be looking into and, and based also that we do have a greater population than we did ten years ago. So I, I would agree with what um, Councilor McCackney is saying, uh, worth looking into.
Uh, go ahead, Councilor McKecney.
Thank you for your comments. Um, like, I, I know what you're saying there, like, the size, you know, if you're talking ten, twenty years ago, it was ridiculous, but I've got friends of mine who worked in the mines up north and they're, and I, I have not a lot of knowledge, but I, I've done, they, they gave me a lot of stuff to read and there are companies out there that, I'm sure that we, we could look into it. I just don't understand why we're not looking into it because we're, we're talking here that our landfill sites, the cost of operating them and, and the um, is going this way. It's never, never ever going to be going back down that way. And to me, it, it's a, I'd, I'd love to be the, us all to be our, whether it's the next council or how long, it's gonna, it's not gonna happen overnight in my perfect world, but I, I'd love to see it happen. But Halliburton County was, took the initiative in Royal Ontario to generate a uh, a proper incinerator and, and, and make sure, of course, that it's not spewing anything in the air. I mean, but I mean, that's no-brainer to me. That, you'd never build it if it didn't, if it was not gonna. So, thank you.
Um, Counselors Rail, I think I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think this is a, this is a place where joining the choir is a good idea. And uh, and, and we have a service delivery review. We, we base it predominantly on the reports that were generated a couple or three years ago. But we also decided uh, it, it's a dynamic uh, program and that when we're reviewing services, we're reviewing services, not only what came from a report issued a while ago, but from the current situation that we're in right now. And Councilor McCackney has made it crystal clear, and I totally agree, that this issue is not going to go away. It is going to get worse. And if technology, as we believe, is going to uh, to assist in the possibility of coming up with a solution, then we certainly should be investigating it. And, and if the solution isn't on the table today, where is it in terms of time? Is it something, first off, we couldn't do it tomorrow morning if we wanted to? But if the second technology could be available in three to five years, I don't want to wait three to five years to figure out that maybe we should look into it.
Uh, I, I would just comment, we do have a motion on the floor about the food recycler program so that we can vote on that. The council might want to consider putting a motion forward suggesting that the Waste Management Group look at the possibility of uh, of incineration. So first, could I ask for a vote on the food recycler program with all in favor? That's carried. And would someone like to put a motion forward with respect to that, Councilor Carter?
Yes, I would put forward a motion that we, we should instruct uh, I can't remember the name of exactly the group.
The Waste Management
Waste Management
Waste Management Working Group to uh, look at the possibility of incineration, including the, the fact of, you know, if, if economies of scale are required, perhaps there's a discussion to be had with the city of Coeur d'Alx or, or something like that. Um, and you know, I think they should be looking at a full, a full round of things of turning, you know, using the heat from the process to eat buildings or to produce power or whatever, but I think it's, you know, the, the technology as uh, Councilor McCackney said, is, has changed. And from twelve or fifteen years ago, and I think it's a viable alternative because the recycling and although the producer responsibility is, is gonna play a role, we still have all this construction waste and the, and the, the, the uh, the papers and the, you know, the cardboard said are produced that yeah, at one point everybody thought was going to be recycled, but now most of it is, you know, is stored and it's not worth as much to us. So, you know, I think this is, it's time to look at this.
Could I have a second or that? Counselor Shell?
Moved by Councilor Carter, seconded by Councilor Shell, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council direct the Waste Management Working Group to prepare a report on the viability of an, a waste incinerator program in the county, including identification of potential partner communities.
All in, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Councilor McKecney. And thank you, Corey. So you're not always off the wall?
Yes, he is.
Uh, next up is correspondence about the Halliburton County Rail Trail. Um, and there's, there's no one here to address these in particular. Now, it's my understanding that we will be getting uh, the earlier requested report on the rail trail and granular material and uh, from uh, our Public Works Department in November. Um, so I, I mean, I, I will ask and see if there are any questions or comments about the correspondence here. Uh, but I, I would suggest that that be brought forward again when we get the report from Public Works next month. And receive it for information for now. Any comments or questions, Councilor Burton?
Uh, not necessarily on, on this, Warden, but uh, there was some talk about us putting the roundtable group back together. And I don't think that's happened yet, or I'm not sure if it has.
I had kind of uh, considered consolidating that into our discussion next month, but you're right. I mean, we had agreed. Uh, my only uh, thought about that is that our discussion had suggested it would be the four mayors that would form the roundtable. And I su- I suspect that we will likely get some pushback from that on their wanting to be members from the public. So I would kind of look for thoughts from council about how you want to see that committee established. Or what the membership should be. I mean, we can stick with the way, the direction that we've got now. Uh, but that may be something that you want to give some thought to between now and our meeting in November. You mean, but you're, you're talking about in a special interest groups to be part of the that's who, that's who is going to be there. Well, I, you know what I mean, I, I just, my mind only went so far as public involvement. Okay, mine went one step farther. And, and that's, I guess, why I, you know, I, I know that it's difficult when you've, you've got people with very strong thoughts about which, which direction they should go. Yeah. So we'll, go ahead, Councilor McKecney.
Um, like, I, needless to say, I'm all for um, you know, there's a lot of decisions that we're going to have to make here in regard to rail trail coming out, correct? And resurfacing, and of course, it's really important because it's for safety and that, but it's just like all our roads up in some of our um, you know, the, up in the farther part of northern part of uh, Dice Art, we fix the road and then the phone never stops ringing because you're speeding on the, on the, supposed to be, you know, going forty or fifty to doing eighty because it's a beautiful road. And I'm just wondering that, that's something that I, when it comes up, the discussions here about the rail trail, I'm all for um, you know, advanced technology and new vehicles and all this, the, the size, the side-by-sides, but man, I don't know how we're gonna police this because we, we got a beautiful surface there and it's gonna be great, but I, I, I think that we just have to really, really go back to um, some serious uh, rules and regulations. regulations and if you are caught, uh, but that's a long ways down the road and we'll get get kicking that can around. But I think that's something we have taken consideration when we make this so smooth and so wonderful, because I'm sure the product's great. That we're gonna, phone's gonna be ringing. Thank you.
Um, so in the meantime, could I have a move in a second or two to receive this correspondence for information? Councillor Dayu, councillor Burton?
Moved by councillor Dayu, seconded by councillor Burton, be resolved that Halliburton County Council acknowledges receipt of the following correspondence. The September fifth, two thousand twenty-three correspondence from Mr. Phil Meads regarding the surface of the Halliburton County Rail Trail and the related use by cyclists. And the August tenth, two thousand twenty-three correspondence from the Trekkers regarding uh, KATV Association's proposal to allow side by sides on the Halliburton County Rail Trail.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, I think maybe we might take a ten minute break. So we will resume at twenty after ten. Now, welcome back to the regular meeting. Uh, next up are reports in minutes from external boards and agencies. Uh, starting with the health unit. Any news for us, councillor Rail?
Yes, uh, the last session was actually held last week and it was held in Halliburton, which is a rare time, but it happens at least once a year and it happened in Halliburton. Uh, the current priorities obviously are going to be respiratory. I can uh, attest that COVID is live and active. And unfortunately, doing havoc in Halliburton County, that's why I'm not where where you are. Um, and so we've had the first also uh, case of influenza. And I think by now it's about two or three that have broken in the HKPR uh, district. And the, there is a uh, uh, obviously the continuing to uh, to to immunization against COVID influenza and RSV. Uh, the 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 health unit is also very strong in uh, in supporting the uh, uh, fight against the drugs predominantly i- in in the prevention side. There's been a launch of the um, Family Nurse Partnership Program that would be for uh, young women who have uh, or families that have not had children before. The formal launch was in early September. And by the end of September, in the HKPR District, there were three that had already been enrolled and were part of the program. Uh, program planning for twenty twenty-four is going to be doing a uh, a complete review and restructure. Um, this has a lot to do with with what happened in the in the post pandemic situation that we're in right now. And the influences that were caused through and by the pandemic. Uh, the key components are intervention and activity prioritization and uh, other areas related to getting best practices and uh, in in clarifying objectives, uh, activities and so on. Uh, the prime responsibility uh, standard, um, again, we, there's no word on that yet. It's supposed to be reviewed in twenty twenty-four. That's the reason why health units exist and what their main purpose is. Uh, but at this point in time, uh, we don't have any uh, word back on that. Uh, the board has not received a response from the province on their request to review the proposed funding model ratio, which which Halliburton County wrote a support letter of. And there's also no uh, no additional funding yet to cover the COVID fluid uh, flu and uh, RSV immunization program. Uh, Dr. Bocking indicated that we'll be receiving more budgetary information before the end of this year. And that's probably it in a nutshell.
Questions for councillor Rail? Councillor Carter?
Um, the province announced that there would be funding made available to health units who look to um, amalgamate or combine with other health units. Is there any? Is there any work being done with our health unit on that?
The answer to that is yes. Um, the 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 the, there has been some information been generated. Uh, Dr. Bocking at the moment is in the process of doing that. Uh, unfortunately, it is uh, it is still being dealt with i- in kind of a closed session uh, scenario with the health unit. Because a lot of the variables at this point in time are still up in the air. And there's been no real direction from the province as to how that's going to happen. Uh, but it will be happening and we're we're pretty confident of that. Uh, the effective date, if I understand correctly, is the first of 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 twenty twenty-four for the investigation piece to start. And that implementation, if we are going to be impacted, is going to be uh, January of twenty twenty-five. So to answer your question, I don't have a lot to give you at the moment, but it is being worked on.
Uh, if you could, that there would be further discussion on that particular item enclosed.
Okay.
Today.
That is correct.
Yes, yes. Um, one, one question or one comment for your information, councillor Rail. Um, I've I've had several calls, and I know this is something that has been discussed in the past about the um, uh, dissemination of information when there is an an issue of a a very serious algal bloom. And who is responsible for that? And it's, it's my understanding that the uh, the health unit has pretty much said, even though it's their responsibility, that they don't have the capacity and and have suggested it become the responsibility of the municipalities. Um, and I don't know that we really landed anywhere with that particular item. And and I think that there's been some discussion amongst the uh, the lake associations about what they may or may not do or what role they might take or or approach within the municipalities or the county with respect to that. But it's a, it is a a rising and and remaining concern at a number of levels that there is something in place to advise residents in an area before something serious happens, because there can be some very serious outcomes from some of the alga blooms that we have. So if you could take that concern back or make an inquiry, go ahead.
The answer is yes, I can do that because uh, under the new uh, we have the, each each member, each elected official, in fact, anybody that sits on the board can now bring forward at a meeting areas that can be discussed or subjects can be discussed. I don't know if I can have you an answer by by next month, but I certainly will put it on the agenda for next month. Uh, in which case we should get a response fairly shortly.
I wouldn't expect an answer by next month, but if, yeah, if that can be uh, put on the agenda for discussion, that would be really good. Councillor Carter?
Well, I think further to that also is that we in Minden have had issues whenever we've had to do anything with our water treatment plant. Um, you know, the notification of folks down river who uh, in some cases use the river for their water supply. Um, you know, the the health unit has bounced it back to us that we're we're the ones that have to try to notify people. We had the same situation with um, at least one of the lake associations where we do E. coli and coliform counts close to the beaches. And um, and the health unit basically turned it over to us to do something about it. As opposed, I mean, it's directly in their mandate. And uh, they were, so I think all of these are are similar type of situations.
Thank you for that.
I'll bring that to their attention as well.
Thank you. Uh, next is point in time, any? Next is Point in Time. Any updates that you could provide there?
Point in time continues to go from strength to strength. I remain really impressed by the organization and the board. The one piece of programming that I would draw to everyone's attention is that they they just reinitiated their mother goose programming, which is programming for for tots and parents or guardians from age of zero to about 18 months. And those of us who are parents in the room probably remember the the feelings of isolation sometimes when you've got a newborn and and this kind of programming can really help to to make you feel connected to the community and and just less alone. I recall something like this being essential to my mother, early motherhood experience. So if you do know of others in the community with with wee babes, I'd encourage you to to pass the note along. It is in Halliburton early on center at the JDH elementary school, Monday mornings, nine to 10 October and November and registration is required. So check out everything on the point in time website.
Thank you for that. Any questions on the point in time? Next is the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. Don't have a lot to report other than the Wardens Caucus was in Ottawa several weeks ago. Primarily, well, to speak about all of their their top three priorities, but primarily to to try and encourage enthusiasm about the seven and seven housing project that they're working on. I believe that it was well reasonably well received, let's say. But you know, they're still reserving judgment and you know, the it's similar to the cell gap project and the approval process that was associated with that. It's a time. You know, it's going to be a long process and and rather convoluted, but you know, I think the feeling is that the more support that they can get from the feds, obviously, the more support that they'll get from the province. And we did have a meeting just prior to that, which was just basically in preparation. Everybody getting their ducks in a row and who is going to speak and what they were going to say. But it went well. And we do not have another meeting until December, early in December. So we'll have more information at that time. And next is Joint Social and Housing. Any information there, Council Carter?
Yes, we had a meeting last week, I believe, and a couple of things of note. One, when we're looking at childcare, we have a a problem right across CKL and the county. The I think the waitlist right now is between five and six years. So most children age out and get into school before they ever get into daycare. So if you're thinking of having a child a few years from now, you might want to sign up. Because that's maybe the only way of getting getting into there. Now, it's it's interesting, of course, is that there's a couple of things that at factors at play, one, the facilities. And two, then staffing. I mean, right now we have the staffing shortage in Halliburton and the way all of this works, you know, you have to have education, you have to be certified, you have to have all these things. And then the if you work for the school board, you get paid, what was it, like four or five dollars more per hour than you would if you're working for childcare? So I mean, you know, we got two government agencies working against each other at totally different, you know, the absolutely same qualifications and certifications required, but one group pays way more than the other. So we're you know, we're working against each other. The this the other part of all this in the housing and so on, we're going to hear about in our special meeting later on today. So I won't go into that too much, but one of the agreements was that this group had with the city of Coorth Lakes in terms of budgeting was that there was going to be trying to work towards a steady increase in budget over a period of time. And the numbers today just don't make sense anymore. The steady increase is not enough to cover the 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 costs. And so there has been the budget that is that is going to CKL and imminently is significant increases over what was presented in the past. So I think there's some, at least there's, you know, there's there there's some support for that, but it's it's going to be a hard. It's going to be a hard sell because we're you're talking well into the double digits. And as we'll see in the, you know, the costing for housing later on today. This this is going to be a sincere challenge for us all. So well, we'll have the official minutes hopefully before the next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Counselor Carter? Any updates and enlightments from the library board?
Just that the chair and the deputy chair, which is myself, and another member of the library board are currently sorting through some resumes for the new or for the CEO MD CEO position. And hoping to get moving on that as quickly as possible.
You know, that sounds good. I must confess that I left out one key piece of information on the Wardens Caucus report, and and that is that there will be a request coming forward to council for some additional funding to help them work through the the seven and seven project. And that will come to a subsequent meeting. I'm not sure if if you know exactly when that's going to be next meeting, next meeting. So I think it and and forgive me, I I've got it in my notebook, which is not here. I think it's in the area of some thirty seven, thirty eight thousand, six or thirty seven dollars that they'll be requesting. So
Just to give before just so we don't cause any, you know, major health problems. There is an affordable housing targets reserve that I think has sufficient funding to cover those costs. So for new housing development, term of affordable housing. So
Thank you for easing the hand.
It it's we're not asking for new funds.
Okay, that that's takes care of those those reports. Could I have a mover in a second or to receive the the reports, Counselor Carter? Seconded by also day.
Move by Counselor Carter, seconded by Counselor Dayu, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives the the following. The October 11th, 2023 draft minutes from the Halliburton County Public Library Board and the July 25th, 2023 approved board minutes from Point in Time Center for Children, Youth and Parents.
All in favor? That's carried. Next are reports from external boards and agencies. And I think that Counsel Burton may have something to report on the CPAC.
Thank you. I certainly do. I just like to report to council that Staff Sergeant Robert Pindel, Operations Manager of the City of Coorth Lakes has has been assigned to Halliburton County Attachment. And I am going to try to stop by and and congratulate Robert in in person after the meeting. So that's a real good news story. Mike started the superintendent Director of Operations from Central Region to send an email out this morning and saying quite quite pleased that Robert got the position.
Think he was their preferred candidate from the sounds of things. It's great news. Thank you. As far as Eorn updates, I think that I've given you a bit of information about about some of the work that Eorn is doing. There's also a monthly update on the on the agenda. Eorn will be having a meeting later this month. And I do know that there's there are several applications coming forward in, you know, Gonkwin Highlands, which one in particular is has had its public consultation process and I think that'll be coming to our council fairly soon. So it'll be interesting to see what kind of response we get to that. Anything on poverty reduction, Counselor Fury? Okay. Any resolution please?
No.
Okay, given that there is nothing under Indigenous Affairs or other business. Could I have a mover in a second or to go into closed, please? Counselors Shell and Burton?
Bear with me, this will take a while. Move by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Burton, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council enter into closed session for the following reasons. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. Litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board. Trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board. Which if if disclosed could reasonably be be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons or organization. And a meeting or part of a meeting shall be closed to the public if the subject matter being considered is an ongoing investigation respecting the municipality, a local board or a municipally controlled corporation by the ombudsman appointed under the Ombudsman Act, an ombudsman referred to in section two twenty three point one three dash one of this act or the investigator referred to in subsection two thirty nine point two dash one, two thousand fourteen, chapter thirteen, schedule nine, section twenty two.
All in favor? That's carried. Hey, thank you. Welcome back to the open session. Coming out of our closed session, we do have a resolution to receive a resignation. Could I have a mover in a second or for that? Counselors Burton and Fury?
Move by Counselor Burton, seconded by Counselor Ferry, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received the notice of retirement from Director of Planning Steve Stone, Steve Stone, effective March 31st, 2024, and that Mr. Stone be advised of council's appreciation for his service.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And we have under bylaws the bylaw to regulate the county road system. Is that the issue that we put on asked to defer?
Yeah.
So that's deferred. Is there any notice of motions? A hearing none. Could I have a mover in a second or to approve the confirming bylaw? Counselors Dayu and Shell?
Move by Counselor Dayu, seconded by Counselor Shell, be it resolved that bylaw four two one two, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the October 25th, 2023 meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered be read a first, second, third time finally passed and the seal of the corporation be fixed.
All in favor? And finally, a motion to adjourn? Counselor McKekney, Counselor Carter?
Move by Counselor McKekney, seconded by Counselor Carter, be it resolved that the October 25th, 2023 meeting of Halliburton County Council be adjourned.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks so much.